Welcome to our afternoon of November the 16th. I drug my feet a little bit to get started so we could hear that great walk-on music from Visit Mesa that was at the, I thought, the wonderful suggestion of Councilmember Duff who's on the Visit Mesa Board. So, thank you, Jen, for suggesting we use that song. And I think that might become our new walk-on music for these meetings. Again, welcome, Oliver. I can see by our Zoom screen that all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to go through the agenda of the meeting that will follow this one. So, council, please refer to that agenda. I know we went over this agenda last Thursday, but, council, is there any additional information or questions you have regarding the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Good call, Mr. Jones.
Yes, Jeremy.
I think your question for M and the entire eight section be removed from consent.
Okay. So, items four M and item eight will be taken off of the consent agenda. Council, any other questions or additional information you'd like regarding the agenda for tonight's meeting? Okay, hearing none. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item two. That's to hear a presentation and provide direction on the library's current and future programming and phased approach to reopening. I know we were asking about this after we just got an update on our museum's reopening. So, thank you, Mr. Brady, for promptly getting this on our agenda. I assume Library Director Heather Wolf is present to do this presentation.
She is, Mayor, and she's here to present.
Thank you. Welcome, Heather. Thank you for working hard under challenging circumstances.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for inviting the library to come speak to you tonight. I do have Tony Garvey, our Management Assistant Two for the library, here to help me with the presentation. So, without further ado, we'll get started. During the pandemic, with a Mesa Public Library card, our databases and our digital collection have always been available 24/7 through our website, mesalibrary.org. And over the last seven months, our digital circulation has increased by 20% fiscal year to date. So, a lot of folks are making use of those resources. However, our librarians still want to connect with our users, and they have been very busy creating amazing online programs during this time. These include virtual storytimes as well as innovations such as our new mini lessons. And we are also using Facebook Live for our adult library users. We've been connecting them with bestselling authors and national experts. For example, we had J.A. Jantsch, who came and spoke about Credible Threat, which is her latest suspense novel set here in Arizona. And we've also had Steve Darnall, the host of Those Were the Days, which is a Chicago radio show devoted to the golden age of radio. And he has shared about the impact of radio during World War II to quite a few audience When you hold in-person programs, you just count the number of attendees. But with online activities, we and libraries across the country are trying to figure out what measurements best help us to judge the success of a virtual program, social media posts, et cetera. So, this slide shows just some of the ways in which our followers have engaged with Mesa Public Library online over the last seven months. And to give you an idea of what those numbers mean, so, our website was visited 4,300 times because someone clicked through from one of our social media posts. And then the top posts that resulted in click-throughs included applying for an online library card, signing up for the summer reading program, and how to request items through our curbside pickup. Our video views have been amazing. They are up 700% from the prior period. And while the average engagement rate on Facebook is 3.6%, ours has been 5.8% for the same period of time. So, even as our librarians were finding new ways to program, we also created a call center in less than a week's time with the help of a wonderful group of city employees scattered across a variety of departments. When the library staff started answering the Mesa Cares line on April 6th, our focus was to identify resources and provide up-to-date information for our community over the phone and through the Mesa Cares webpage. Over time, we've also helped small business owners complete applications and provide necessary documentation for the Business Reemergence Grant Program. We've called businesses to alert them about the Technical Assistance Program. And currently, library staff working in the call center also act as case managers for clients in the Technical Assistance Program. And we are assisting residents in completing the application for the eviction and foreclosure prevention program. So, phase one of our reopening was our park and pickup phase. Park and pickup has been even more popular than we expected. Just last week, we reached the milestone of 100,000 items checked out curbside. We are also using what we've learned and adapting curbside delivery to programming. So, first, we began offering take-and-make kits. These fun activities are distributed through our park and pickup service. Since we began offering these on October 1st, we've distributed over 739 kits. And then this year, our annual Halloween Boo costume parade, which council members have helped us with in the past, we transformed it into a car parade at all three branches. Each car received a family pack of books provided by Kids Need to Read along with other festive treats. In this way, we delivered Halloween to over 1,200 children across Mesa. As we improve our ability to serve large number of vehicles, we are exploring adding hours. This is especially important for Dobson and the Red Mountain branches, as they do not offer Grab and Go, which is our lobby service at the main library. And speaking of Grab and Go, this is where we allow up to 10 visitors at a time into the main library's lobby. They can browse a collection of popular adult, teen, and children's materials, pick up holds, check out, get library cards, and engage in other quick transactions. We are almost two months into this service at the main library. In that time, we have welcomed over 1,500 visitors to our lobby, where they have checked out over 3,300 items and asked more than 400 questions. The most frequently asked question is how to get a library card, while the second is about computer and printer access. So, in the next week or two, we will be adding two Express computers for 15 minutes of use, as well as a printer, copier, and fax to improve this service for our community. Main staff have also found a way to expand the footprint of the area while keeping in mind the upcoming construction for the children's area. Our goal is to significantly increase the size of the browsing collection in the next few weeks. Finally, our amazing team is also looking at how to expand hours. So, phase three, we are excited about moving forward and welcoming people back into all three locations while keeping our community and our staff safe and healthy. So, we are hard at work on phase three. For phase three, we hope to be open from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to start at all three locations, and the public will be able to access all materials at each branch. Computers will be available for reservation for up to 60 minutes at a time. In order to keep everyone safely distanced, we have greatly reduced the number of computers on the floor. Because park and pickup has been so popular, we plan to continue to offer this service, but will eliminate the 10 to 11 hour. This is the least busy hour for curbside delivery, and since the buildings will be open at 10:00 a.m., anyone coming at that time can enter the building to pick up their We've made great progress on mitigation efforts to keep everyone as safe as possible. There are a lot of items listed here, so I'll highlight just a few. We have temperature scanners like those at the City Plaza Building and other city buildings. We also have counters to track the number of people in the building and display monitors to notify staff, security, and the public when that limit has been reached and to signal when no one will be allowed entry until someone leaves. Since there are no state guidelines for reopening libraries, we are using information and recommendations from various sources, including the Realm Project. And Realm stands for reopening archives, libraries, and museums. One of their recommendations that we are following is to quarantine returned materials before checking them in and making them available to new users. And then finally, an ionized air filter has been installed at the main library. The filters for Dobson and Red Mountain have been delayed, but they are on order. And we're also excited to be moving forward with a voter-approved bond project to remodel the children's area at the main library. The project will expand the children's area on the first floor of Main and allow us to create zones for more defined age groups. This will allow us to provide more age-specific activities and amenities and allow greater separation for our tweens, who don't really want to be with the little kids, but they're not allowed into the teen zone just yet. Council should see the contract for construction on the December 8th agenda. And if approved, we anticipate construction will start mid-January of 2021 and be completed, hopefully, in time for summer reading to start in May of 2021. And, as you know, the voters of, in 2018, also approved the addition of a Think Spot at the Dobson Ranch Library. Last week, we went to the Design Review Board to receive their input on the exterior design for the 1,600-foot addition to the front of the building. As you can see, the addition will update the look of the library, and it was great to hear several members say how excited they are about the new look. And they provided some very specific feedback that the architect will incorporate before going to the Design Review Board for approval. And I have one story to share. During the meeting, we learned that one board member became an architect after being inspired by the model of the Dobson Library that was on display at Dobson when he was a child and visiting that library. It's now in the Mesa Room, excuse me, it's now in the Mesa Room, so we still have it. But it was nice to hear that it had so inspired him. Because Dobson must go through the Design Review Board process, it has a different timeline than the main library project. Right now, we're probably looking at construction starting in summer of 2021. So, questions?
Thank you, Heather. And again, thank you. I think you noted that very early on in our pandemic response, our librarians became really the front line for the city of Mesa in responding to the 644 CARES number and doing a lot of the outreach. So, I hope you and your staff understand how much we appreciate the way you were able to quickly modify your job duties and respond to that challenge. To that, the 644 CARE number continues to be in effect, and I meant that as a question. And what's the future of that? Do we see any end in sight for the 644 CARE number?
So, Mayor, it does continue. We've been told it will end in December when the CARES funds run out, but I'll pass that over to the city manager.
Yeah, so, Mayor and Council, I think while we're still actively trying to work through the program, as Heather put it, for the rental relief and utility assistance, we want to make sure we have a line where if someone goes onto our website, they can get hold of somebody and talk to somebody and help them walk them through the process and where they need to go to get the assistance. So, since we're still offering that program and it's still up and running, we want to keep the hotline open. And it also just serves as kind of a bank for other questions, too. But mostly, I suspect now, it's mostly on rents and utilities, I suspect. So, we'll keep that up, but its days are numbered, because, as you know, the whole program will be wrapping up by the end of the year.
I said that my question was a little off-topic. I was just thinking, as the library ramps back up, will the librarians still be the city personnel manning that line?
Oh, yeah, I think they will continue. And then I think the idea is, Mayor, that that number, I'm not sure we decided what the future state of that number is, but without the additional programs, I suspect that that will go dormant for some period of time.
Thank you. Council, questions for Heather regarding the library? Councilmember Luna.
Heather, thank you so much for opening the facilities. I know that many community members want to access the library. I especially am sensitive to the amount of students that may not have Internet at home but can go to our facilities and access your online facilities and get what they need to do to make sure that they are fully educated and participate in that process. My question is to you, I know that we've got three, you know, we have the three branches. What's the capacity of each of those branches? And you talked about only 25% you would allow into each facility. How much, how many people does that represent? And then you also will have a gatekeeper to make sure there's a constant flow that people, when they exit, then you allow people to come in. Tell me how that process is going to work.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, so, the 25% is the number of computers that will be available. We did that basically in order to create enough distance between each computer and user. The number of people allowed in the building, we have researched, there are so many different formulas. Again, as I said, there aren't any standards for libraries, so there's a lot of different formulas based on square footage, but mine is all the shelving, you know. So, what we thought we would do is just start with some numbers, and then, as we find out, if that allows there to be enough distance and people to use the space in the time that they need, then we, or if we're having a lot of people having to wait outside, but there's still a lot of space between people, then maybe we can increase the number. So, the plan right now, on November 16th, is 20 people at a time at Dobson, 40 people at a time at Red Mountain, and then, no, that's not right, 40 people at Main and then 30 people at Red Mountain, sorry. Like I said, it's been changing a lot, and we've been trying to find some science behind it. But right now, we're just going to have to go with, make a decision, try it, and see how it works.
Now, will they be able to call in and reserve entry to the library? Or you're hoping that just 20 will show up, and then, as they exit, you're thinking there will be a line of people wanting to come in? How is that going to work?
So, for the Red Mountain and Dobson libraries, we are working with a vendor. That system would allow people to reserve times for coming into the library. We're still testing it. It turns out, we're the first library trying to use it this way. So, we've been on the phone with Denmark, and, because this product is mostly used internationally. So, it's been an adventure, but we are making progress, and we hope to have all of that figured out come January.
And I appreciate you're going to be having temperature checks before people walk in. Certainly, we know that COVID seems to be in the uptick in the area. We're just finding that, you know, that's something that we certainly have to be vigilant about. So, I appreciate you taking those efforts, and I'm sure you're going to make sure that everything is well-clean and maintained as people come in and exit the library, and as well as the materials. So, or thank you for doing that and being vigilant on our community. So, I appreciate all the hard work you've done, Heather, and just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Let's go to Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, thank you for the presentation. You know, I'm excited about opening up our libraries. I know I get inquiries every week about how we can improve or increase the capacity to deliver material to our residents in our community. And, you know, with this pandemic, people are looking to the libraries for more resources and to help with things, so I appreciate that. I do have one question. Once the main library opens, I believe that's opening first. Is that correct, in January, or are you going to open all three simultaneously?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Freeman, we would open all three simultaneously for this phase three. Right now, Main is the only one that's in phase two with the lobby service in the afternoons.
Okay, so, my question is, do you have the adequate security and protocols in place in the event you need them to help with traffic or any concerns there at the libraries?
So, currently, we do have a security officer helping us out in the afternoons at the main library, and we are working with Trident to schedule security for all three locations when we do open in phase three.
Okay. I'm just thinking about your computer spacing and time limits, and, you know, we want people to be satisfied with 60 minutes, and if some become upset. But regardless, you'll manage that at the appropriate time, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Councilmember Duff.
I think a lot of my questions have already been answered. I was really more concerned about computer use since the library is a great resource for those who don't have computers in order to apply for assistance, jobs, many other things. I assume during this whole time that we haven't had any way to provide that service, and so in January, it will be the first time opening up. And I know spacing is needed. Would there be another way to create more space? If, since you have the computers, and it's just spacing as they hold back, if there's anything? I don't know. You can tell me what your demand is typically from computers, but I assume now with so much going on with our economy and job losses and the needs for assistance, if, you know, if we're able to assist those people in need.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we are also working with Arizona At Work. They have the facility in the basement of the main library. Currently, it is geared towards youth, but they are looking to expand the program to adults as well, given what's going on right now. So, in addition to what the library provides at the main library on the first and second floor, well, second floor for adults, we will also have some additional, hopefully, additional capability down in the basement as well. And of course, they are skilled at helping people prepare resumes and research job opportunities.
And I was just curious, how long do you have to quarantine your books?
Oh, so, the Realm Project that I mentioned, they've been working with a laboratory in order to see how long the virus lasts on books. So, if the materials are unstacked, they're, all traces of the virus are gone within three days. If the materials are stacked, it seems to be more like six days. So, what we are doing is, we are quarantining specifically for four days, at least four days, before we check materials in. But the public does, we handle everything with gloves and masks and cleaning products and everything. Then, once it's checked in, then we, another couple of days goes by, so we hit the six-day quarantine before the public actually is given the material. So, that's kind of how we're handling it. We didn't want to wait six days to check in materials, because waiting four days to check in materials is already driving some people nuts. So, we've also increased the number of items you can have out on your card, and we just keep trying to remind people that we will get their materials checked in, you know, because they're watching. And we will get them checked in. It's just we're waiting until the trace amounts of virus have dissipated.
Great. Thank you for all your work and diligence in making the library available to people, given the constraints. You and your team have done an awesome job, and I appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Other questions or comments on this agenda item? All right, well, thank you again, Heather. I think it's important for us to note, again, in the context of the pandemic, some might question, why are we opening facilities? And I think it's because we all understand that healthy, we want to be healthy, but healthy also means mental health. And we, there are safe ways to do things during the pandemic. So, I appreciate the fact that the library staff is adopting some of these proven best practices to reopen very responsibly during COVID, much like our museums. And there are some park programs and some arts programs that can function effectively and safely during this time, and some that can't. That's why, you know, venues and other parts of city government remain closed. But we appreciate the efforts that you're making to provide as much mental help for us and the residents of Mesa as possible.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Next item on our agenda for this meeting is item three. That's Current Event Summary and Reports on Meetings and Conferences Attended. Council, let's begin with Mr. Freeman.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to be Councilmember Luna for once. But I wanted to share my thanks to, I think, Carrie Kent. This might be Carrie's last council meeting, and probably she's there. I hope she has a tear in her eye, but maybe not. Appreciate all of her work and what she's done.
Let's have her come up, so she can see those tears in her eye.
Yeah, let's see it.
We don't know if it's a tear of sadness or celebration, so, here she is.
All right.
Here she is.
We need to get the camera on her one last time, Carrie. How about that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Council.
I should have left it for the mayor. I'm sorry, Mayor, but I just jump, I just do things spontaneously.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Freeman, I think it's very appropriate that you bring this up, because we all know that, for those who don't know, this is Assistant City Manager Carrie Kent. She's had a long and very, very distinguished career with the city of Mesa. A lot of the things that we love about the city of Mesa have Carrie Kent's fingerprints on them. So, "thank you" is such a remarkably, you know, lacking thing to say to Carrie Kent for all that she's done for our city. So, Carrie, I know you're a humble person that doesn't, you know, look for a spotlight, but so I'm sure this is painful for you, but I wanted to know that...
And here come the tears. So, thank you, Mayor.
Contributions are not a well-kept secret at the city.
I was just waiting till Wednesday.
Tell me about it. Well, Mayor and Council, thank you so much. It truly has been...
An honor, serving this amazing community. It's been my second family for 27 years, and I'm really proud of what we have all done together, our elected officials, our city management, our staff, our community, and our partners. It's, we've just been so fortunate, and we are an amazing city that, you know, that is an awesome place to live and work and play and visit. And it's been a, oh, my goodness. It's been a challenging year. It really, it really has. But, but, boy, this, this community and this organization has stepped up, and I'm really, this is one of my most proudest years, which is awesome, as I leave this organization. You are in great, great hands. We have so many talented employees here delivering really, really great services. And I know I'm leaving, and I'm heartbroken at it. But at the same time, I'm really excited about this new chapter in my life, and it's exciting. But thank you again for allowing me the honor of serving this community, and it's certainly been my pleasure.
It's great. We'll have an opportunity to try to make you cry again in a few days, so...
Thank you. I look forward to that.
Start the process today.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just add, you know, Carrie, I appreciate you, you know, being able to walk into your office and getting pragmatic solutions to issues, and, you know, you're spot on. You know, if you don't have an answer, you say, well, let me see what I can do. And that means a lot to me as a community. that means a lot to me as a council member because it affects somebody in our community, and I just appreciate your service and working through some timelines and difficult decisions, and your DNA is in the city of Mesa forever, so we appreciate your service, at least for myself, and I can say more later, but appreciate all you've done for me. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, I might just add, I also attended a National League of Cities Public Safety Committee meeting, and also we took a tour of the Dobson Ranch Golf Course and appreciated seeing the positive outcomes there at the Dobson Ranch Golf Course, and almost every parking space was full over there that golfers enjoying a beautiful day on the fairway and in the city of Mesa. So thank you. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Councilmember Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. I've also had a busy week. It started with, of course, the National League of Cities. I've attended many of the meetings there. I've also convened a meeting with Hispanic elected local officials. I also attended a meeting with the National Association of Latino Elected Officials as well, and I was also pointed through the National League of Cities to serve on the Model City Charter Committee, so I'm on the steering committee, and we're going to be discussing model city charters throughout the U.S. So anyway, I've kept busy, and I look forward to Wednesday so we can roast our dear Carrie. I can hardly wait to talk about Spanish club president in her high school, so I know we're going to have a great time celebrating her, her accomplishments, and all that she's done for our wonderful community. So thank you, Carrie, and I'll see you Wednesday with a special gift only for you. Thank you, Carrie.
Mr. Thompson.
Like my colleagues, I have NLC meetings all week. Today was our NLC Board Legislative Committee meeting, and then I followed that one as the Chair of the Community and Economic Development Committee. We had a meeting today really to talk about past resolutions and moving some of those forward, letting some sunset and so forth. And then the rest of this week is basically a mirror image of today. It's more committee meeting, committee meeting minutes and so forth. I know tomorrow, we're having another CED Committee. I think we have a Board of Directors meeting in the morning, as well as our Resolutions Committee meeting on Wednesday. So it's a, it's a pretty full week, I think, probably for those of us that chair boards or chair committees, because we are, I guess, board members at that point, so it's a, it's a pretty busy week.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Councilmember Duff.
Yes. Carrie's sentiments are bringing me to tears, too. Carrie has been such an asset to the city and such a great friend to so many, and I can't say enough good about her and respect her and look up to her so much, and she will be missed, but I'm excited for her future. As far as our doings, I was on the tour of the Dobson Golf Club today as well. I also attended a National League of Cities. I'm on the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee, and we met and talked about our legislative advocacy for building sustainable infrastructure today. Also, I'd like to mention that tomorrow is Turkey Tuesday for the United Food Bank, and encouraging those who can to drop off a turkey and/or canned food at the Mesa Convention Center tomorrow between 7:00 a.m. and noon for those families in need. You can also make a donation at www dot feedaz.org. So I appreciate everybody's contributions so that all families can have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? You know, the mention that, Councilmember Duff and Freeman mentioned that we were, we went out to the Dobson Ranch Golf Course today. I just want to give a shout out to Councilmember Horedeya. He has worked very diligently on that issue over the last few years, and it's a great, it's a great progress in effect, to see how healthy and financially stable that facility is in Councilmember Horedeya's district, and doing large part to the attention that he's paid to it and the responsiveness that he's had to those who had concerns. I just, Frankie, I just want to thank you on behalf of the city for helping to shepherd that in such a positive way. I thought it was, that golf course really is shining right now. And also, it seems, I've been observing on the media for the last few days, the tremendous spike and dramatic increase that we've seen in COVID cases. And so it seems inappropriate to not make some mention of that under current events. Today on the radio, I heard that our nation has now reached 11 million COVID cases. One million of those cases have been diagnosed in the last one week. I think that's very sobering, and it helps us to see that everything that we've been experiencing up to this point might really just be preparation for what we're about to experience in terms of the dramatic increase and spike in cases. I'm proud of the way the city of Mesa has responded to this challenge and made adjustments in the way that we do business and businesses in our community adopting a mask requirement. But in spite of all the things that the city government is doing, I just think we need to point out and remind everyone that really, the changes and the response to this needs to come from we, the people. Until we modify our behaviors and we are vigilant, and we avoid, you know, fatigue and complacency, we're going to continue to see this going in the wrong direction. As a community, I know that we all are very focused, and a top priority is keeping our schools and our businesses open. That's essential for our mental and financial health, in addition to our physical health. So I would just encourage us all to resist the urge to become complacent or fatigued, particularly in anticipation of the Thanksgiving holiday next week. We need to find ways to celebrate responsibly so that that's not another super-spreader event, because that's the last thing that our community needs right now. So thank you. I hope we'll all just be recommitted to our vigilance on that effort. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we will be meeting this Thursday for a council study session, so we will see you on Thursday morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Are there any opposed? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned, and we will convene our regular council meeting shortly following the video introduction.